Good afternoon, everybody. This is the Town of Dewey Beach Monthly Town Council Meeting with a public hearing being held at the Dewey Beach Life Saving Station as well as via Zoom. Today is Friday, September 20th, 2024. It's 3:00. With that, I'd like to convene the Town Commissioners Meeting with opening ceremonies and a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of Georgia, to its stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Next item is roll call. Commissioner Bauer.
Present.
Commissioner Gibbons.
Here.
Commissioner Juzinski.
Present.
Commissioner Persinger.
Here.
And Mayor William Stevens is here, as well as we have the Chief of Police, our Town Manager, as well as our Counselor. With that, can I have a motion to dot the agenda?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Committee reports. Commissioner Juzinski.
Nothing to report other than we have an infrastructure meeting this Thursday to talk about Jersey Street.
Great. Commissioner Gibbons.
Nothing to report.
Commissioner Persinger.
The Climate Change Committee met a couple of weeks ago, and they're continuing to push forward the set of recommendations they made to the council last year. One of those is later on our agenda for top possible vote. That's increasing the free board to three feet. There are two other discussion items that come from the Climate Change Committee as well, and we'll talk about those later in the agenda.
Wonderful. Commissioner Bauer.
Marketing Committee is looking for a new chair. Alex Cedric with the other responsibilities he's had with his day job, he needs to spend more time there. So if you know anybody, somebody with a marketing background perhaps would be a good fit for that, let me know.
Thank you. Next item is, can I get an approval or a motion to approve the August 16, 2024 meeting minutes?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Town staff updates?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Del Dot has decided that Mumford and Miller will be doing the work on the Center Island project and on the ADA improvements to the sidewalks throughout the town. That'll start sometime in late October, early November. It'll run all the way through to the spring. It includes a post of ropes from Clayton down to Collin Street, curb bump outs at intersections, and then also around the telephone poles. The sidewalks will be extended and widened around those areas. Also, I looked into getting some of the lights changed and brighter up near Pfeiffer's along Route 1, and I was told by Del Dot they are going to be redoing all the lights from Pfeiffer's up to the elementary school. Most of it, all of it, except for two, are in the Forgotten Mile. They're going to upgrade 44 lights in that area. So if you see some work being done, that's what's being done up there. The Army Corps of Engineers drafted a report on the Reed Avenue flooding situation. It's going through their process right now, and until it gets through their process and gets approved, we won't be able to go any further with Reed Avenue. So I just ask for everybody's patience. Jersey Street, as Commissioner Juzinski said, we'll have a meeting next week on it, but we're looking at the options between French drains and stormwater pipes. The French drains will be about half as much as the stormwater pipes, and it won't affect as much as the street. So that'll take place next Thursday during the infrastructure meeting. Beacon Engineering will be doing the presentation on that. Also, Beacon Engineering's the town's new engineering firm. We're no longer using RV. We did get the grant approved yesterday for Van Dyke Street that JMT had written with me, and it's to do a study on the amount of water that comes off of Van Dyke Street into the bay with the two pipes that are in the middle of the beach. And what we want to figure out is how much water comes out. So if we end up having to put a pumping system down there later, what size pumping system? It's $100,000 grant with the town being responsible for $50,000, and Denrick giving us the other. But before we commit to that, I'll put it on the agenda so we can discuss it, and the commissioners can actually say they're willing to put up the $50,000 for that. Dickinson Street paving on the ocean side, remember, that was one of the streets that was not going to be paved during the regular state paving of the town. We received $57,000 in CTF funding from Representative Schwartzkopf. That's going to start Tuesday and Wednesday of next week, and that'll be basically from Route 1 all the way down to the dune line. And that, of course, is pending weather. Flyers went out today to let the residents know that that'll be taking place. Signboard was approved by Representative Schwartzkopf and by Del Dot. Again, want to thank him for that. That was $18,000 in CTF funding. That'll be a portable signboard that we'll be able to put on the north and south end of town to warn drivers about the crosswalks and other functions. Right now, we still have a water hazard out in the ocean. Denrick put out guidance on Tuesday that they think you should stay out of the water until Monday. We're going to follow Denrick's guidance right now. The signs are posted each one of the dune crossings saying there's hazardous water. We're not going to be down there chasing people out of the water, but we're letting them know that they should not be in the water. The beach is open, but they should not be in the water. The last time we had something come in off the beach that we consider hazardous waste was Tuesday, and it was a plastic syringe without a needle. We've had the beach rake yesterday. We had it raked today. We're going to have it raked tomorrow, and we're going to have it raked Sunday. And the vendor's going through and telling me if they're finding anything, and he's sending pictures to us of the material that's coming off the beach. Del Dot's paving project for the rest of the streets in town is scheduled to start October 21st. That was the project they were supposed to do in the spring. Continuing the effort to improve safety around town. If Kate could bring up these photos real quick. There was a number of different stop sign intersections, and you also may have seen it also in the survey that we just got. We actually put these lights on, that's at Cullen and Baird Avenue, and of course, everybody knows that's a cut through from King Charles to Route 1. They're very dim, very low light, they're solar powered, and they're just to get people's attention when they get to those stop signs to stop. The other ones are on Baird and Swede Street, and then the last one is on the end of Baird Avenue where Bellevue is when you go down past the pump station. So, and again, in a continuing effort to try to get people to obey public safety throughout the town. Dune mats are removed from Collin Street up to New Orleans Street right now. When I say they're removed, it's from the middle of the dune down to the beach because last winter we found the mats that we left in were covered with sand, and we actually had to pay some folks to come in and help dig those out. So we're moving them up halfway to the dune, but from the street to the top of the dune, those will remain in for the rest of the year. Want to thank everybody that donated to the fire company. We had $11,000 worth of donations. We matched it, the town matched it, for another 11, for a total of $22,000. Special thanks to the folks on West Street and the McCoy family for their gracious donation. Also, want to thank Cindy Sousa for the dinner and lunches she provided to our parking folks over Labor Day weekend. Dewey Beach Partnership, great end of the summer party. Thanks to all the volunteers. And just to say, our team did a great job this summer. I think Police Department, Parking, Lifeguards, Admin folks, Finance, Clerk, everybody did a really good job this year. I think we had a really good summer. Penning any questions? That's all I have.
Quick question. The Army Corps of Engineers report on Reed Avenue, that's not available in draft form, I assume?
No, they haven't even given it back to me yet. It's got to get approved by their attorneys and go up, and then it'll come down, and I'll get a copy of it when it's approved.
But it'll be final at that point, so there's no opportunity for comment at any point?
Not that I'm aware of. They came down, met with the mayor and I down at the end of Reed Street. They looked at it and said, yes, this is worth us continuing the process. They wrote it up. They send it up, and then it comes back to us.
We had sent it to Council for review and confirm management boilerplate. It's more of a, it's not necessarily disclosing exactly what it's going to do, but how the funds will, and how the funds will transfer as well as the management note overall, which is a question I didn't want to, I did want you to make that comment. If we do move forward with the Reed Street pumping station, the town will have to have funds associated with that.
And I'll come back to the town and ask for that. That's 25% of the total $1 million grant that we got.
Okay. The other comment I did want to just provide for you, Bill, is that the Delaware Volunteer Firemen's Association was in town this week, and Chuck Snyder made a point of saying he's really thankful for how we've stepped up and increased our donations considerably over the last few years. Okay?
Thanks, Mayor.
Chief?
Hello, everyone. So, we're winding down, obviously. In December, we have about four seasonals left at this point in time that are still helping us out until almost the end of November. We hired our last officer, which was one of our seasonals. His name's Adam Er. He is a two-year seasonal. He'll be starting the academy on October 20th, and that's the Dover Police Academy. And then, let me go over our stats real quick. So this is for the month of August because we're always a month behind. So our calls for service were 840. We had 22 criminal arrests. We had 238 traffic citations written with 329 traffic enforcement hours, which is pretty significant, because I know we have something we're going to discuss later about the traffic survey that was done, and a lot of the comments on there, they're not seeing officers running traffic, but they are out there writing speeding tickets, crosswalk violations, stop sign violations, cellphone, there's a lot of violations. So they are out. 329 hours of traffic enforcement is pretty significant for an agency of our size. We had 19 accidents in August. They wrote in additional 88 parking tickets. We had 26 civil citations written, and we had two DUI arrests. So out of these civil citations, 13 of those were for urinating in public, and four were for underage alcohol possession or consumption. So we went down from the month of July where we had 57 urinators, and in June we had 35.
Two tough things in Dewey.
That's kind of winding down now, which is a good thing. So we got our last e-vehicle finally arrived, so that's Lieutenant Dempsey's e-truck, so that's running well. It's all marked up and ready to go, so that was a good thing. We were able to take his vehicle and issue it down to one of our officers, and then his car went back to the fleet to one of our new officers. So we just keep taking the cars down. So one thing we're looking at purchasing right now with grant money is an electric, all-electric EV motorcycle manufactured by Zero. These motorcycles are quiet. They're not like a Harley where they're loud in town. They're very maneuverable. The University of Delaware has about seven of them, and they're great for getting in and around campus. And for our town, since we have small streets and alleys, this motorcycle will be great to get it when we have heavy traffic. It's going to be great for traffic enforcement, also when we have events like races, when you have to block different intersections, which a lot of times the state police, when they do stuff with their motorcycles, it's for events and stuff where you can move from place to place. So we currently have two officers that are eligible, that are current motorcycle riders that are available to take this training. The University of Delaware provides free training for these specific motorcycles, and it's a one-week-long course. So hopefully, in the next several months, we'll be able to purchase that through grant money and have that out on the road. It's just a great additional vehicle that we'll have to patrol year-round. The officers will have, they don't need leathers and all that because it's a different type of bike. They're just going to wear their regular uniform. They'll have a specific jacket that's probably protective if they were to fall in a helmet with a, that they'd be able to communicate with it. So that's not a lot of additional expenses. So that's what we're working towards, is to get that added to our program. I think that's about it.
Chief, did you say that you got the grant, or you applied for the grant?
I applied for a grant, but I have another grant that I already have to use for the funding, that I could use for whatever I choose in the grant money.
Questions for council? Great job.
Thanks.
Next, the Dewey Beach Chamber of Commerce update.
That's right.
Should be in alphabetical order.
Okay, thank you.
I agree.
Public safety there, so maybe you can do that for me. Public safety?
I forgot to mention my public safety day.
Oh, okay. That's right, tomorrow.
Yes, tomorrow.
Yes, tomorrow is the public safety event, and we're there. In fact, the County Bank of Delaware is participating, Community Bank of Delaware is serving for us, stepped up to volunteer. There you go. Okay. Okay, well, first, let me tell you that just the major things that were coming up. So you've got the scarecrow show in Trail. So you can see some scarecrows around town. I think they follow the law, so I think it's okay. You will have the annual sidewalk sale, which is October 4 and 6. Scarecrow runs October 1st through the 31st. Of course, Sea Witch is coming up. You've got all that going on in October. And the next business after hours is here. It's at Grotto's. So we'll be doing their ribbon cutting for their new facility as well as having a business after hours there. The next general membership meeting will be October 16th. Waiting, it's going to be at the Pearl. I don't know who our speaker is yet, so if anyone wants to speak, let me know because it's not confirmed, okay? Final preparations for Sea Witch are underway. The program, I've got the draft with me. It goes to the printer tonight, and that comes in usually around, oh, October 14, 15. And what we do is we hold that, mail it to the people who have asked for it for mailing, and then we make it available to everyone the week of Sea Witch, because with all the events, they disappear. So if we don't hold on to them, they're gone. I did want to tell you about movies and bonfires were successful. It was interesting. We wondered if the parking would have an impact. The reality was, movies were down in attendance but up in donation, okay? So that's your Monday night. Wednesday night, the bonfires were down in both. That's mainly weather. And it's still hard to tell. You had asked, you know, is it making an impact with the rainouts and the beaches availability and the length of the beaches? I can't tell yet, but definitely on Monday night, it did not make a difference. It's slightly lower in attendance, but not in donation. So there you have it. I hope everyone got the information on the movies and bonfires, the charts and all that. You all have that. Okay. The only other thing I wanted to tell you is, in Rehoboth, they, we've closed the kiosk, but it runs Memorial Day to Labor Day. We did serve 1,895 visitors. So if you ever wonder if you have a spot where they can come off the beach and ask a question, about 2,000 from Memorial Day to Labor Day. And then the only other thing was, that's it, unless you have a question.
When is the Grotto ribbon cutting?
Okay, that one is, hold on, don't give up on me. October, business after hours. Here we go. It is on October 9th, begins at 5:00. And I imagine what we will do is have the ribbon cutting right in the very beginning so we get a lot of people in the picture for it. Thank you.
My calendar. Thank you, Karen.
You're welcome.
Take care. Next item on the agenda is to seek public comments for any non-agenda items. So if there's anyone here, please state your name, address, and open for public comment.
Hi, Diane Tenhopen, 1406 Coastal Highway, the Delano. We're across the street from Town Hall. I'm here today representing the Board, the HOA Board. We have a situation with a property flipper who has come into our building and has taken a one-bedroom with a loft and turned it into a three-bedroom. They doubled the occupancy. They did not get permission from the HOA Board to do this. We don't have the parking for it, all these extra people. We're concerned about capacity, so we pulled the permits and we asked the town to conduct a follow-up inspection. This is a renovation of an existing space. It's not an addition or new construction. The town declined. The town suggested we talk to the county. We talked to the county. The county has declined to do an inspection. They referred us to the fire marshal. We called the fire marshal at least twice and have gotten mixed responses. Yesterday, they told us to fill out an application, which it's not clear why we would be applying for anything, but that's what they said to do. So I'm here just to express we're disappointed in how this has unfolded. We're just not getting any support from the town, the county, or the fire marshal as of this morning. We're on our own. So if this can happen in our building, it can happen anywhere in Dewey, and that's why I'm here today. We're in the process of hiring council. That takes a while, you know, it's not like we have anybody on retainer, and we're worried that the unit will sell, it's listed as a three-bedroom, and we're worried it's going to sell before we can take any action. So I just, I wanted to express that to everybody today. There seems to be a significant gap in the permit process.
I have a question for Fred. If subsequent to this, the, a property owner wanted to rent their property, can we deny a rental license if the property was renovated and added bedrooms without a proper permit?
I suppose we could deny, rental permits, I believe, have a capacity or are associated with the number of bedrooms.
Yeah, correct.
Right. So I think if somebody, certainly I know there were instances in the past where the occupancy of rental units were marketed as being greater than they were permitted to be, and we identified those through social media and other things, and took action. So I would think the same would occur here. And I also think, and I'll let you, do you have a follow-up to that?
No, that was really my question.
If any buyer is represented by council, he's going to contact your HOA for the status of your dues, and whoever is managing, I assume you have dues there?
Yeah, well, the property flipper didn't contact us for anything. And by the way, the unit is 870 square feet. It's very small, so it's really not safe for 10-plus people and possibly children, I guess, because they're not counted. But if you've seen the rental listing, the pictures show bedding for at least 10 people. And they added an interior room, no window, no closet, that we can see in the photos. They won't let us get in. They're not returning phone calls. They're just showing the unit.
Is it a rental listing or a sale listing?
It's a sale listing.
Sale listing, okay. Well...
We don't know if they plan to rent it or not.
It doesn't have a rental license. Okay. So anyone representing a buyer, though, is going to contact the HOA and ask for a status on the dues? That's, you said you were concerned the property would be sold before any action was able to be taken.
Yeah, they're already showing it.
Right. But whoever it is that is responsible for reporting whether the dues have been paid can also report that there are violations of certain restrictions or covenants that apply. So a respective buyer would be put on notice that there's, you know, they might not be getting what they're, what they've been represented to be getting, which is a unit that could house as many people as a seller would like.
Right, and if it's another property flipper, they may not care. And this flipper is trying to buy other units. They've already asked me if I'm interested in selling, so they, they may not care. So, you know, we don't want a flop house. We've worked very hard to get control over our rentals, and it's been a long road. We don't want to be calling the police, you know, in the middle of the night. And we don't have parking. And by the way, the town got ripped off on your permit fee because it's only for $40,000, and they gutted the place. They were in there every day, all day, for five months. They did a lot more than put up some drywall and do some, and doing some painting. I mean, they had electricians in, plumbers in. There's no way it was only $40,000 in renovations. And the same with the county. The county permit was only for 20, so, but it's just, we're disappointed because we feel like we're on our own. We're on our own, and we are hiring council, like I said. We're probably going to have to hire our own inspector, so we're going forward with that, but we have a very proactive board. You know, another building could just get slammed, and they're in.
What's our process when, let's say I applied for a permit to do construction, to do X, and I just do whatever? We have no recourse on that?
Well, we don't, let me just jump in for a second. We don't expect the town to inspect every renovation. We know that that's not feasible, but if the town is made aware by an HOA Board that there's a problem, then it seems like there should be some follow-up.
Diane, we'll take everything into consideration. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Kate, do you have anyone online?
David Moskowitz.
Please, let him in.
Yes, David Moskowitz, Dewey Beach. And two items. One, if someone submits a permit without including details about a wall, the town has the authority to take action to address their mission. Otherwise, what's to prevent someone from submitting plans for a four-bedroom home and then later converting it into a 10-bedroom property without proper oversight? Second, I wanted to quickly bring up something I noticed in the newspaper. It showed that the town manager publicly supported a candidate for state rep of the Dewey area. As public servants, town managers and town employees are expected to remain neutral, and this situation underscores the importance of being neutral as the supported candidate lost the primary. And especially when the town is seeking public money from the state reps, it's very important for all town employees to remain neutral, and this helps preserve the public trust. Thank you.
Anyone else, Kate?
No.
Next item on the agenda is to open a public hearing. It's a public hearing regarding an ordinance to amend Chapter 185 zoning and Chapter 1 definitions of the municipal code relating to the establishment of a minimum lot area requirements devoted to planning an open space in the neighborhood residential NR zoning district, regulating the boundaries and materials used in driveways and walkways, prohibiting parking in green space, and amending the definition of green space. Is there anyone here for public comment on that, on the specific agenda item? Anyone hear from?
Anybody online?
Online, okay. With that, we'll close the public hearing and get into the agenda action item. Number one, discuss a possible vote on ordinance to amend Chapter 185 zoning and Chapter 1 definitions of the municipal code relating to the establishment of a minimum lot area requirements devoted to plantings and open space in the neighborhood residential NR zoning district, regulating the boundaries and materials used in driveways and walkways, prohibiting parking in green space, and amending the definitions of green space. May I ask Commissioner Persinger to?
Sure. Yeah, we talked about this at a couple of different meetings. It came from the Charter and Code Committee, and I believe Planning and Zoning has looked at this as well, since it's a zoning change. Basically, it applies to the NR district. It is a new increased green space requirement. It would apply only to new construction or to additions or expansions of an existing structure. And in the discussions that we had at the last meeting, there were a couple of changes that were necessary as a result of that discussion. There was some concern about ensuring that there was some limitation to the use of other than natural mulches or plantings, as use of artificial mulches or decorative rock. So there was an addition here which said that those artificial mulches and decorative rocker stone may be applied only around and between plants and shrubs and may not extend more than a radius of three feet from the main trunk or stem of the plant or shrub. Three feet was a number that I plugged in there. It seemed like a reasonable number. It could be two, it could be four, depends on what others think the right number may be. There was also the need to amend another section of the code, Section 185-54, to refer to new green, these new green space parking restrictions in which parking is in fact prohibited in green space. And let me just tell you how that was implemented. There was already a provision in the code that said, "No motor vehicle shall be parked in the front yard of any lot, except within an established driveway or within a marked parking space access from the driveway entrance of the lot." The proposal is to add to that the language, "And parking is subject to applicable planting green space and open space requirements in Table 2, bulk zoning requirements in all districts." So that makes sure that it's the ability perhaps to have some flexibility, additional flexibility in parking in other areas of the, of the town. There is a, this ties people into the more specific requirements for the NR district. I, you know, again, we've been through this several times. I think we've been quite flexible. We've expanded the definition of green space a couple of times, including just leaving the property in natural condition. Obviously, taking care of weeds and anything like that is unsightly, but, you know, there's not a requirement to plant grass necessarily, or even plant shrubberies. You could use natural mulch, or in limited situations, artificial mulch or stones. So unless there's some questions or other comments, that's really all I have to say about it.
Commissioner, is there any question for Commissioner Persinger?
I just wanted to thank you. I think that you listened to all the public input where people had concerns, including my own, and I think you've modified it so that it says, "Could capitalize," you know, in terms of giving people some flexibility and not putting a burden on them unless they're building new or adding on to their existing home.
Any other comments? Can I have a motion or?
Just one other issue. I'm not sure what the effective date should be. What's in the draft is July 19th, 2024. That's obviously not a good date, but, you know, perhaps there are some properties that are already in process, so that we need to accommodate that process with a delayed effective date. I'm not sure what that should be.
Well, could we do as effective date if approved, but after all existing building has been completed? Like the ones who, I think what you're saying, if you have a permit right now, they're not effective.
Yeah. So I do think the answer is, you could make the ordinance effective right now without impacting, effective immediately without impacting any project that has been permitted.
Okay.
If it's been permitted, even though the construction perhaps hasn't begun, it's good for you. If they're allowed to proceed in the manner in which they, they, at least that's the way I, I would hope that it would be treated by the county. Or, excuse me, by Dawn.
So we would substitute for July 19th, today's date?
Today's date. Correct.
You asked for a motion. I mean, I'll move then we approve this with the effective date of today.
Second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Number two, review of the August financial statements. Ms. Hall.
One great thing, with the transfer tax we will receive in the next couple of days, we've made budget for transfer tax. Don't go spending my money, please.
That's a record.
This will give us, because my budget, this will give us the next seven months of transfer tax to revenue to cover any shortages that might arise in other areas. In October, we'll be beginning the budget process with the departments. And if the commissioners want the finance committee to maybe weigh in on revenue streams, it might be a good time for them to start, just so that we can kind of get ahead on things. Did anybody have any questions about our numbers?
I have a couple of questions. I don't think they're hard questions.
Okay, let's do this.
Could, could you just describe briefly or kind of generally what the differences are between the financial summary, the operating and, and the total?
Yes, sir. The operating or the total? Let's start with that one. That has every bit of money that comes in and out. Every grant, every donation, everything like that. Any bit of money that comes into any of our bank accounts is in there. Then all the expenses associated with those grants or with donation purchases. So every single transaction is in the total. The operating is strictly those items that pertain to running the town. So the money that the beach patrol captain, the beach patrol gets in for junior guards and donations for their competition, that's in the operate, in the total. It is not in the operating. Anything that the captain purchases with those donations is in the overall. It's not in the operating. So it's strictly what it takes to run this town in the bare bones.
And Gina, correct me, that also includes capital expenditures?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay.
Go ahead.
Just one other question. There was a slight difference in the set aside money, the 5% daily and seasonal parking to streets and infrastructure. Is a difference between the operating and the total summary? And I'm not sure what, what, I think that's the category. Let me just double check that. Um, yeah, it's the daily and seasonal, 5% daily and seasonal parking to streets and infrastructure. Uh, there was a difference there. I'm not sure what that, I, I thought maybe that was related in some way to park mobile fees for some reason, but I'm not sure.
Type that.
Oh, okay, okay.
But you do bring up a good point, which is I do want to point out that the operating fund right now is showing 107, and regarding parking permits and meters, there's an excess of 107,942, showing that we had actual 1,518 versus budget of 1,410. That would be offset by the administrative, total administrative expense, which is where the park mobile fees are. Why that is also 96,000 above budget. So it would, just so we're not overspending, we have made, if you netted those two together, but it's proper accounting for our accounting front.
Yes, sir. And when we do the budget amendment in December, the, everything will be smoothed out.
What's the budget amendment in December?
If it is needed to show that, hey, we got in all this extra grant money and we spent all this extra grant money, it just shows it, makes it look like we are totally being honest with everybody, which we always are.
To counsel, when we, in October, our October meeting will include a review of proper accounting by our auditor, Dan Kenny, so he's coming in. He's going to probably most likely suggest, based upon conversation to have with Ms. Hall, of having kind of a policy manual review in October, review in December, like review in December to make sure that we need to do budget amendments so that we fix that problem.
So that we actually authorize the spending that's happening?
And that's.
I'm not commenting on that.
That's one of the things I'm working on, Commissioner, to get us to forward think on our, our grants and what we could possibly do.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Number three, discuss a possible vote on an ordinance to amend Chapter 101 flooding damage reduction of the municipal code relating to the freeboard height requirements for the elevation of buildings, structure, and equipment as referred by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Is this you or is this the town manager?
Well, I, probably me, I guess.
Me came out of planning and zoning and.
Right.
But we're, we're doing a, is this a public hearing or just?
Well, we could ask, yeah, we could ask if anyone's here for public hearing.
But it does not require a public hearing.
Okay, so we did not notice this? Okay, I'm fine. All right. This is, again, something that we've talked about for some time. The genesis of this was the, in our 2018 comprehensive plan, there was a recommendation that we revisit the, the freeboard and consider an increase in, in freeboard. Freeboard being the safety factor above base flood elevation that's intended to keep properties out of the way of floodwaters. The, the climate change committee took this up and recommended an increase without a specific amount. We, among the commissioners, discussed this in, in terms of the design in the new town hall. We voted unanimously to include a three foot, three feet of freeboard in the design of the new town hall. So that's now gone through our process in terms of this draft ordinance. It has gone through Planning and Zoning a couple of times. We've, we've talked about this a couple of times at the most recent meeting of Planning and Zoning earlier this week. They unanimously approved an increase in the freeboard to, to three feet. That said, I think there were some concerns expressed by some of the commissioners, the Planning and Zoning commissioners about this, not the least of which was, is there a need to educate the public about this before we actually take action on this? Or I suppose we could take action on it and then plan to have a publication, education campaign about it. You know, I think it's probably fair to say that most property owners in town probably haven't a clue what the freeboard is.
Correct.
And there's no reason to expect that they would, because it's only relevant to you if you're building a new, new building or you're doing a very substantial renovation on the structure that you own. So, you know, I think before we vote on this, I, I would like to have a bit of conversation about whether or not we should engage in some sort of public education campaign. The other thought that I had is that the climate change committee is already struggling with what a public education campaign might look like for all of the climate change, resiliency, and sea level rise issues. If we were to go forward with a climate, with a public education campaign on the freeboard issue, we could in some sense kind of use that as a, a test vehicle for how to better target a more general campaign focused on all of the climate change issues. So let me stop there and get thoughts from other folks.
Go ahead, Commissioner Bauer.
Yeah, I think, you know, my, my opinion is we should probably do the education on this first, because the main issue I think that'll come up, and I agree with it, I mean, we want people to, you know, raise their houses off the ground. So somebody down the road is going to say, that new house that went up next door to me is three foot taller than mine. Why did the town let that happen? So I think we need to, I'd rather be open and transparent and get that out there first and come to the next meeting and tell us what you think on it. Some people might say, no, keep it down low. I don't know, but I, I think it's best if we get the public input on it before we vote on it. So one of the emails we got today was, is it going to raise height? Well, yeah, it's going to raise height.
I printed some stuff out that I'd like you guys to come take a look at, and it's aligned with Paul's thoughts, is take one sheet from each of these. And that's, when we met last time, I talked about, and I think every, all of us understand that the ground height is different than the elevations, different than the freeboard, and you have to really calculate what this is. So what I printed out was I printed out the flood zones and a topographic map of downtown Dewey. Okay? The, the area of the bay side. And so on the bay side, you basically start sea level right at the bay, right? And then you go up. There's a lot of property really at the bayfront that's at one or two feet. And if you look at the topographic map, and I couldn't get a really good quality one, but you'll see I marked the one foot curvature line, I mean, one, the lines are each one feet.
Do I have to just ask you, did you, do you have any chance to have these electronically so that Kate could put it up on the monitor?
If you'd like to do it that way.
Is anybody there?
It's going to be, no one's going to be able to see it though online because it's so big. It's going to be really hard for people to see, but I would be glad to send them the Kate.
The Delaware flood planning tool is really a very good, a neat tool. Because you can focus in on specific properties to identify what the flood zone was for.
Yeah, I don't have a lot of years before I'm underwater.
Kate, and, um, attachment tool. So, um, one of those, you're seeing the weak topographic lines on them, and the other one, you're just seeing the thing. And I just did that area because that's really the area that's affected by what I'm talking about. And this is taking a while to upload here. But the net effect of it is, and what I was talking about in the last meeting, is in a lot of these areas, you've got an 86 flood elevation and you've got a ground elevation of, let's say, a foot. And so your flood, your base flood elevation is five feet above the ground. And let's say that's the minimum. Right now, we require a one foot, so you require that you do six feet above the ground. If you do three feet, you'd be requiring eight feet above the ground. And when you do that, you've also got 32 feet of building height above it. So a couple of things are going to happen. One is to Paul's, Paul's thing, and some people are going to object to, the person next to me, all of a sudden, their house is 32 plus eight, 40 feet above the ground, and they're on the bayfront, right? So in terms of what people say they're looking at, they're now looking at that. The other thing that it's going to change is, once you get to that seven or eight foot mark on the effective height above the ground, people's design considerations for what the build are going to change. And it's going to change in a couple of ways. One is rather than when you walk in the neighborhood and the front door is being elevated but not a full state above the ground, you're really going to have more separation. And you're really going to have where people's entrances are all one flight above. No one's going to do an entrance that's like halfway. So it's just an aesthetic thing, whether people like it or not. But the other thing that's going to be significant is, you're allowed, it's not considered a story, to have a garage with a breakaway wall below your home in a flood zone. You just have to build a breakaway wall. So basically, the default of most people doing new construction is they're going to choose to have a breakaway wall type garage as their lowest thing, which won't count as a story. And then they'll do three, using the 32 feet, they'll do the three stories above that. So your aesthetic default for new construction in those areas, people are going to be like, well, it makes no sense for me to have the garage story and then three stories above that, which they'll be entitled to do. So a lot of these things are, you know, maybe not necessarily intending consequences of trying to protect people more from future flood concerns. And I don't think, in terms of what's happened in public input, that necessarily the public at large really understands this three foot freeboard, how it's going to change, what people will likely decide to do once they build. And I, and so I gave you these handouts so you can kind of see the areas that are affected. And basically, it's, it's the bayfront in the downtown Dewey zone. You know, once you get to Route 1, the ground elevation really starts to catch up quite a bit with the flood zone. Once you get up to Route 1, it doesn't look like it's a slope. But as we all know from all of our stuff with Reed Avenue, for instance, you know, there is a couple of feet difference, you know, as you go down those streets between the elevations. So my point on this is just really for awareness. And I'd say that I want to be sure the public, if we're going to do this, the public really understands what they're getting, because importantly, we can never go back. That's like a firm requirement. We can never go back. So if we change it and people all of a sudden don't like it, they're going to feel like, oh my, oh my goodness, you guys can't change it back and now this is the new default, right? So I just think that public awareness of what this will imply is really key.
One other thought on that, too. So since it goes up three feet, they'll need steps. Those steps could go into the setback area, which would make them have to build a skinnier house, too. Something I was thinking of there.
Where you have the steps switched back.
Yeah.
We could make an exception. Yeah, I mean, there, there are certainly accommodations, yeah.
Yeah, we could make an accommodation for that. I don't want anybody building a smaller house because of this either.
I, I think, I think a public education campaign is probably a good idea. I really don't want to do one, however, only because it's going to be difficult to do. It's going to be time consuming. Because people's base of knowledge, I think, about this issue is so low that the town or, or some group of us are going to have to spend a fair amount of time responding to questions that, because people simply don't understand it. There's also the issue of how to develop the campaign, what do you use for content? And I would be remiss if I didn't mention the, the set of materials that Dave Lyons, the, the new chairman of, of PMZ, as well as the chairman of Charter and Code, put together a really good set of materials with advice from Dawn Hinks, our building official. I think that'll form the basis for whatever material we decide to send out and whatever method or form we decide to send it out in. I think that's, that's a good basis, a good basis to start from to develop the material for the campaign. So, you know, I, I'm not sure how best to go about this. There's also a question of who, who should develop this, who should put together, who does the first draft of what the campaign looks like? And we're talking about an email campaign. I think just posting it on the website is not going to get the, the amount of information. And certainly, we can count on Kate to do some sort of a story for us on, on this so that it gets some more attention, but.
I don't know, good friends of ours.
Some of the issues I think we need to think through.
Well, I, I'm going to just play devil's advocate. You know, we have, we and, and the committees have spent a lot of time looking at this. What we're talking about on it is, we're currently at base flood plus one. It's going base flood plus three. We're well aware that there is a, it's almost like, is there, is there a middle ground that we're going, what outcome are we going to have in public, public comments? I can remember early in my career that we put out to the whole 200 person call center to determine whether they wanted blue carpet or gray carpet in the call center. It was 51% to 49%. And so 49% were unhappy. So the outcome may not be what we want or get us to even further conclusion. And we do put it out. But they, they happened, and I thought what David Lyons did was wonderful in terms of laying it out step by step by step by step.
Yeah, I, I don't think we would present this as, as a choice. I think, at least my recommendation, we, we would present this as the right thing to do and tell people why it's a good idea. I think we would have to admit some of the downsides, some of the unintended consequences. But I think, you know, a positive approach is, is the way to go with this thing.
I agree.
Okay. So do we need to table this?
Yes.
For the development of a pot for?
I think, I think at a minimum, we need to put something in the town newsletter, letting people know and trying to see.
To get some feedback.
Get some feedback. It's, it's a big enough change, it's not reversible, that I would want to make sure people are kind of aware of it.
Does failure to move forward impact our FEMA insurance and things like that? No.
Okay.
Because we're already at base, at base flood plus.
So we're okay?
So, yeah. But the FEMA, as Dawn has told me a few times, FEMA could, FEMA's FEMA. They could change it to four tomorrow. You know, we have no control over that. And then four becomes seven, five becomes eight. And it's.
Well, the likely FEMA change, if wants to happen, is FEMA, when they redo the flood maps, basically saying what the base flood elevation is, and then new construction kind of has to conform.
Conform to that.
To that. That's the, that's the more likely change. We, I think we got new, Dawn would know exactly, but we got new maps sometime in the last five years, so it's going to be a while until we get another map.
Gary, as our historian, I mean, was there a particular situation that caused inflection to look at this? Like, is there a reason why that plus one wasn't enough?
It was really the, the recommendation from the comprehensive development.
Comprehensive development.
Revisit the issue. We think there's a need to increase freeboard. I mean, it's okay to table this, I think we should table this for now, but I, I don't want to do it without some specific recommendations about what the next step is. I mean, we talked about putting it in the newsletter. Is that all we want to do? Do we want to do something beyond that? Who's going to do the first draft of what goes in the newsletter? Is that, I'm going to look back at Kate, and she's now hiding behind her monitor. You know, I'm happy to review, and I'm sure Dave Lyons would be happy to review whatever comes with it. Obviously, Dawn Hinks would have to be involved in this as well. But I'd like to have some concrete next steps rather than just tabling this.
I can weigh in on that, because I, I think our three vehicles to communicate this would be our town newsletter, the people that are on our email. be our town newsletter, the people that are on our email list, and then maybe set up something on our website that, for notifications on this, on this issue. Like, you can opt in to, you know, do your, your winner watch, for example. So something that, you know, any, as we discuss this thing further, you know, we want people to know that we wanna do it in the public, we want everybody's input. But if they don't comment at the meeting, then there's no input on it. So we'll try to get as, as many people aware of this, of what we're talking about here as possible. So those would be, and social media, I mean, but that scares me to put something like that out there. That could go terribly wrong.
I'm just looking at the, I see us putting a lot of work and effort, and then.
Let's put something simple together, you know?
But we're gonna end up educating, then basically coming to either this, this conclusion that we wanna be more than plus one, or staying plus one. So it's, it becomes a, it's an exercise that I don't know the outcome's gonna be any different, other than.
Well, hopefully, it isn't any different. But, I mean, there's, there's obviously no guarantee. I mean, we could also look to, I don't know what process Lewis followed, but I know that they just increased their freeboard to three feet in May of this year.
You mean plus three?
Um, to plus three, yes. And Hanlope and Acres has had plus three freeboard for quite some time. Not sure when it was first implemented. So this is not a crazy thing to do. It's, you know, it's certainly something that other municipalities have engaged in. Okay.
Well, we can do an email campaign, we can talk about structure, but do an email campaign, have an education, and put this on the October agenda to try to.
Yep.
Move it forward.
Get people come to that meeting.
So can I?
To move the campaign forward, or to?
Oh, to possibly vote on this.
Oh, okay, right, okay. Can we develop something that quickly that goes out to people? Again, you know, somebody has to do the work, that's.
Well, I think a lot of it's taking what Dave Lyons has already done and converting it into something relatively easy to digest. Not, that's not David, whoever's, if you're watching.
Is that something that the town is willing to take on?
So, so I've talked to Kate about it. What we would do in our newsletter is actually do a link to Dave Lyons's papers that he put together for Planning and zoning, which I thought were very easy to understand and to read. I don't know if Commissioner Persinger wants more than what's in those drafts. They were really informative.
Those are very good, yeah. I'm just looking for, I'm looking for a specific way forward so that we actually get something done, and can come back in October and potentially vote on this.
So let's put that out in the newsletter and communicate out, and potentially with, you know, pictures of what it really means, 'cause I think that from visualization, raising three, you know, two feet of your.
It would be a link, Mr. Mayor, because if we put everything that.
Right.
That's overwhelming. It would be. See, we'd have a synopsis on it, you click on it, and it would take you to something like Dave Lyons.
And I would, is it, would it be wrong to say that we intend to vote on this at the next meeting, so it's very important that we get feedback as part of that link? Okay? All right. So a motion to table?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number four.
Excuse me, could I speak to the last issue?
I'm sorry?
Yeah.
Yep, come on up, Dave. Maybe a little quicker on the draw there, sir.
Thank you, David Thomas, Reed Street. My reaction is that, yes, I think that tabling is a good idea. My concern is that it was getting to be a couple of years ago that the Climate Change Committee, before I was on it, recommended there be some increase in freeboard. So it's been a couple of years. And I was delighted, frankly, to see what, I guess David Dions with the beginning of a white paper out of the Planning and Zoning had come up with. And then, for this meeting, what Dawn apparently had been very involved in. It was longer but succinct and clear, excellent, good illustrations, informative material. My remarks here that I wrote out was thanks. I think this is just what the doctor ordered to move things along. And so I hope that it all goes on the website. Everything that Gary has said here today, I agree with. I really do. And I like the input from David. And I haven't seen the materials, really, but I'd like to see that go into the hopper. And I support what Paul has said, that there should be an involvement. You don't wanna ambush the public with something that we can't go back on, and so on. So I am very supportive of all this, and I was delighted to see these materials come into detail. And I think we're getting there. I personally think three feet's a good idea, but, you know, hey. And the last thing I wanted to mention is, this kind of thing's gonna come up again under number seven on today's agenda. So thanks, guys.
Thanks, sir. Number four, discuss possibly vote to request the Planning and Zoning Commission to review and make recommendations regarding Chapter 185, Table 3, requirements for temporary expansion of patron areas. So for discussion.
So I have a, I have a quick question on this. This is a rather minor change. Do we, if we vote unanimously, can we just approve this change rather than recurring it to them?
We can.
Okay. Let's discuss the change.
Don't wanna create work for people we can do ourselves.
Not getting the document I need. Kate, do you by a chance have the summary of what we're trying to?
Which ones changed?
Yes, okay. This has to do with the expansion of premise that we prior, we're requiring ninety days. The, the change to this is that when there's an event and the situation occurred where, and it has occurred numerous times in the past, I think that we may have been unaware of this ninety-day requirement, where there's been a restaurant in town that's requesting the expansion of premise, and it hasn't been as long as ninety days. And the issue here is, from the standpoint of when, the, the point of there is to make sure that we have the resources in town, whether it's police and, you know, police and/or that there's not a competing event that's gonna happen that can, if it's use of any public grounds. So the quest here was to make this simple change to when police or use of public property is required, to Section E of the ordinance. So that if somebody like North Beach decided they wanted to have a cornhole tournament nonprofit on their property that doesn't require any use of our funds or our people or our streets, they can do that without the ninety-day requirement.
They still have to get permission, but it doesn't have to be ninety days in advance.
Correct.
What's the magic of the ninety days? For us? I mean, just administratively, I mean, I don't think ninety days add sometimes. Couple weeks, three weeks, I don't know, two weeks.
Well, there's a public hearing requirement, so, um, so it's gonna be a minimum of thirty days. And when it comes to sixty, ninety, thirty, they're arbitrary numbers.
Right.
With the exception of the requirement that we hold a public hearing.
Can we change that in the, that we're not held to? Yeah. The part about the public, public hearing line for temporary expansion.
Well, I just wanna remind everybody that we did have an expansion of premise this year that was requested on the date before the event, and we approved the date, and we approved it. And it was a pretty large event that was ongoing year after year after year. So there's also a kind of, an issue associated with, is this only for new events, or is it for old events?
Right.
We also did this knowing.
Keep this simple.
We did that knowing we were going to be revisiting press ordinance.
Correct.
Right. So I'd like the motion to approve it with the language changing it to thirty days instead of ninety days.
The only problem I have with that is that we didn't put that out to the public. We put it out as a change that when it requires.
Which Daniel.
And then we, Kate, do we have any, we have one here for public comment on that specific agenda?
No one's speaking up.
Okay. Counsel, what do you think?
But is thirty days enough time? Does that allow us enough time to schedule a public hearing and get it done?
Yes.
Well, the challenge is everyone's gotta adjust their schedule on short notice to potentially accommodate it, right? Depending on what's our meeting schedule and the public hearing notice requirement, right?
That's true, too.
You could end up with a situation where we have to have a special meeting anytime someone does it, because they just give us thirty-one days, right? You know, depending on how the calendars align, so.
So forty-five days would be thirty days plus the fifteen days that you need to notice the vote hearing.
Yeah, that might be a safer bet for us, so that we aren't in a situation of having had special meetings with people every time they wanna do something.
Since we've noticed this with the language of ninety days, are we allowed to change it to forty-five?
It's a, that's a gray area. To what extent is that a significant change? Ideally, ideally, I mean, you've identified the issue.
Right. Can you, give me a scenario, town manager or chief of an expansion, a recent expansion of premise that required your officers and/or use of public areas?
Race.
A race does.
Race, but that's.
It's every weekend.
Yeah, every weekend. It doesn't take us thirty to forty-five days to approve that. We see that, we get the officer signed up, and we can do that.
And every time there's a race, you know about it?
Yes.
How much in advance?
That's not expansion of pink.
Well, it's not expansion of premise.
Yeah, that's not, but like, do we go, pink is a reoccurring one, so we know what to expect from year to year. We have an action plan for that, and we know how many posts we need for that, so, you know, I don't think we need that person to file something ninety days every time. We know that's coming. I mean, it really doesn't take us on our side that long to get officers together to work in a bit.
I think the issue isn't so much the town being able to accommodate it as much as accommodating the public hearing.
Well, if I can make, so, correct me if I'm wrong, Kate, really what we're talking about, the expansion of premises, changing what that restaurant does with that area of what they're allowed to do based on their conditional use, right? So for example, Starboard changes the parking lot into something different, but their conditional use says it's gotta be tables, and we're giving them the ability to change that and expand out. But when you talk about North Beach, what they did, all they did was take a volleyball court, convert it into a cornhole, and they put a stage out there. The issue that the town finds itself in is, when somebody has a good idea like that, you know, to do that fundraiser Labor Day weekend, they really should have let us know before Memorial Day. So if you haven't let us know those ninety days out by the current town code, you can't do it. And that's where the real problem arrives. I think the races, we're not really changing anything there. It's really when they're taking something that their conditional use says that's the only thing you can do in that area, and then you're changing it. That's where the challenge comes in. But it's gotta be noticed, I guess, in.
Well, so I'm looking at the notice, and the notice is not specific to, to when police or use of public property is required. That's singled out in the attachment. But the notice, I think, implies to the entirety of the, of, you know, it implies that you're going to be considering changes and making recommendations regarding 185, Table 3, temporary expansions and.
So with, with that, I'll make a motion that we approve this ordinance with the change from ninety to forty-five.
I'll second that.
Any other conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that's also under the theory that it was not a significant change requiring the Planning and Missioning Department.
All right. Number five, discuss possibly vote on ordinance to amend Chapter 117, Article 2 of the Mist Code to give authority to train police officers and town staff to utilize sound level meters. Town manager?
Yeah, this just gives the ability for, for me to make the decision whether we want that to be enforced and to be certified, the officers, whether they're full-time officers, seasonals, or gives me the ability to take it, you know, off the, the police plate and bring it over and hire somebody, get them certified, and they can calibrate the machine. So it just gives us the option to either have the police do it, or for us to hire somebody else to do it.
I think it's a good idea.
And this is not changing the limit at all. This is just making sure we have people that are able to do it. Lovely.
I would like to suggest a wording change, just to make it a little clearer. I would like the first part of that to say, any police officer or town staff trained in the use of a sound level meter is authorized, and then it can stay, stay the same from there.
Great.
Just make it a little clearer, that the train, that they're all trained to use this.
You mean the town staff has to be trained, too?
Right.
Well, and also they're trained to use a sound magnet, because all police officers are trained.
I think it's a good, good change.
Right.
But not in town sound meter, yes.
Could I have a motion with the changes that Commissioner Persinger just?
Motion.
Second.
Give it to Liz. Gents, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Number six, discuss possibly vote on ordinance to amend Chapter 173, 3, replacement of trees removed under permit or in the Mist Code to grant waivers regarding of those removal of trees.
Thanks, Mr. Smith. So what we're finding is, folks, when they're in the north, in the, in our district, when they are purchasing some of the older homes and they were building newer homes, and they commit to setbacks, they may have to take out as many as six trees. And when they build their new homes, it's gonna be hard to fit those trees back in. When they turn in their plans, and Ms. Hinks can also provide some additional information, they also turn in a landscaping plan. So they turn in the landscaping plan and shows, they've taken six trees out, and this is where they're gonna put their six trees, with their eight-foot setbacks and so on, and in the front the setback. But when they actually build the house, and they're actually looking at the house, and they go, we gotta put in a, replace it with an eleven or twelve-foot tree, six of them, and then they start to look at their setbacks, they're saying, this isn't gonna work, because within three or four years, this tree's gonna be so big, it's gonna grow into the house. So we've run into this, this, we have forced residents that have, that have built under this code that they must replace the number of trees. And I walked one of the lots in question earlier this week, and they did replace with six trees, and it is really, I mean, and the setbacks, those trees are gonna grow big, they're gonna go into neighbors' yards, they're gonna go against the homeowner's home. So we just, we thought it might be a good idea to give the town manager, the building official, the ability, in some cases, to waive that, and then maybe even give us the opportunity, I was talking to Dave Lyons, for us to be able to say, okay, you took out five, you put back in four, but the fifth tree's gonna go somewhere else in town, and you're gonna pay for it. So I just throw that out to the commissioners to consider. It's just some of the, some of the things, some of the challenges we're running into at town hall, and I don't know if Ms. Hinks has any additional comments.
Ms. Hinks?
No, actually, Bill summarized it quite well.
All right.
All right, motion to approve this. Makes sense.
Anyone for public comment? I like to have discussion on this, because one of the things I don't, one of the things I don't like about this is the subjectivity. And, uh, not to say that we have to come up with a formula, but I just wanted to understand so that we're not putting town hall in a precarious position because we're trying to be accommodating.
Right.
So open up the council for comments.
So just how many, I mean, we just did this chair, and it's, how many times have people had to go for a variance?
We haven't, as far as I know, we haven't allowed any. You mean for, for not putting trees in that place?
How many times, has anyone actually said, oh, this requirement's hard, I need to get a variance, and gone to the Board of Adjustment to get it?
Well, it's not a zoning ordinance per se, so I'm not.
So this isn't, this isn't doable by the Board of Adjustment, you're saying?
I don't think so.
Interesting, okay.
There is a, there is a Board of Adjustment.
I mean, it says it is, it is, but.
It's the arch.
Does it, does it say in, in Chapter 173 that they can?
I'll try to see.
I'll check. Appeals. Yeah, it does. I'm sorry, does send, so, yeah. The Board of Adjustment does have jurisdiction to grant relief.
I mean, to the point of, you know, it being arbitrary, the way this is written now, it's, it's kinda completely open. it's kind of completely open. And, you know, we've had a historical problem in this town where, you know, people who are noisy sometimes get their way and other people kind of, you know, do other things. And I don't want us to be in a situation, or the town to be in a situation, where some people are feeling like they have to comply, and because somebody makes a lot of noise, all of a sudden, they're getting a waiver and stuff. I think we haven't had a situation where people said, hey, I just can't do this, I need to go. You know, yeah, it may be tight in some cases, but anytime you're doing construction, you know, you have multiple things that are all part of the rules that you have to comply with. And when you decide to build to the maximum footprint that's allowed, then sometimes that has to make other things, like you may not be able to do a pool and build to the maximum setbacks and still fit the pool that you want in because you built to the maximum setbacks. If you want a pool, you're going to have to pull your house a little bit. I think trees are just kind of another thing in that whole department that you have to kind of factor in to the decisions. And I think that the Board of Adjustment can look at something and say, hey, is there really an undue hardship where they don't need to do it? I personally would like to see us get more experience with this, see what has to go forward to the board in terms of people trying to do what they're trying to do, before we basically take it and just kind of have an arbitrary, it gets eliminated depending on, you know, whatever criteria.
Ooh, sorry.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I thought that was...
Ms. Hinks?
I'm looking at Section 173-7 concerning appeals, and I'm not quite sure it applies to anything other than, and allow me to read it, just a few statements. Any person aggrieved by a decision of the town building official involving the denial of a request for a tree removal permit may appeal to the Board of Adjustment. So I don't know as if this particular code addresses, no, you don't have to plant. It does specifically involve if the building official denies a request for a tree to be removed.
Are you implying that it would need to say request, retrieve, or removal and/or requirement of replacement of?
It could very well be, yes.
Okay. Okay.
I don't like the way this is structured at all. Basically says you can get a waiver and, you know, so if you get a waiver, then what? That means you don't have to plant a tree? You don't have to plant anything? It seems there should be some options. You know, what the code currently requires in terms of replacement of a tree is a tree that's a circumference of fifteen inches. That's about four and three-quarters inches in diameter and twelve feet tall. That's not going to be threatening to anybody's house. And you don't have to put in a tree that's going to be a forest monarch. There are lots of trees, lots of varieties of trees, that don't grow that tall, that grow maybe twenty feet. So, you know, if you pick the wrong tree and it happens to grow too tall and threatens your house and maybe your neighbor's house, that's your fault. You know, that's not the town's fault. If you want to call in an arborist, if somebody wants to get some sort of relaxation, let's say, of the requirements, and you want to call in an arborist, there ought to be a fee for that as well. Why should the town have to pay for an arborist? We ought to set a fee for something like this. But I wouldn't make this just an either-or, you know, either you do have to plant it or you don't. If there really is a good case to be made that there isn't available space for the number of trees that you're required to put in, then there should be some other options. It could come down just to planting some significant shrubbery in terms of providing some green space here, you know, rather than just replacing the tree. I don't see a need for, you know, a complete waiver here. And I don't think it's the Board of Adjustment's purview, or I don't think they have the skill set to be able to make a judgment on this. You call in the arborist and you make a decision based on the advice you get from the town's old arborist. But again, I think there ought to be some backup positions here rather than just saying, you don't have to replace that tree.
So, the language is waivers from the strict enforcement of the code, and I think that implies that a waiver might be a conditional waiver or something that could be conditioned upon exactly what you're talking about as opposed to a complete waiver.
Right. But we should put some, what those conditions might be, what are the options that someone might have if in fact there's a need for some sort of waiver?
Again, I'm going to go back to, I mean, I know, no one yet has not been able to build what they want to build and meet the landscaping requirements. Is that correct? Or has someone actually kind of come against the hard stop and they just can't do it?
So, we went back and forth with one property, and we just told them after going on the lot, talking to them, coming back and forth, talking to their landscaper, and said, the code says you have to do, replace as many trees, you must do it. And they did it. But the neighbors on one side are complaining that the trees are going to be too big, they're twelve feet, they're already over the fence. When I say they're already over the fence, you can see them, and you know they're going to expand out. And they do, we do have a list of approved trees that you should pick from.
Well, I mean, people plant trees all the time where the branches go over the fence, and the neighbor, if they don't like it going over the fence, has the right to trim it back to their property line. That's just, that's just kind of how things work, right? So, you know, someone, you know, I get that one neighbor may not like what they, we plant tree-wise, but they have a right to trim it back to the property line if their branches are expanding out. I guess what I, I just don't, right now, I'm in a place where I don't necessarily think that we need, at this point in time, to really kind of water this whole thing down. I think we need to kind of see it a little bit more, and if we're having a repetitive problem, then certainly we can come back and address it. And we do have the Board of Adjustment in the meantime that can deal with it if someone's really got some situation that they say, hey, I just can't meet. They can explain it to the Board of Adjustment, and the Board of Adjustment will say, hey, you only need to do the four trees because these two aren't going to work.
Yeah. Yeah, I come back to the same thing. I wanted to, I want us to focus on things that, you know, make sense or logical. There's a reason why we have tree ordinance in place, and I don't want to create more headache for the town manager, town hall, so. Table?
Yeah, I'll motion to table.
All right, motion to table?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Discuss the implementation of a town resiliency fund to mitigate storm or flood damages referred by the Climate Change Committee. Commissioner Person.
One second, let me pull this up. Okay, as I noted earlier, the Climate Change Committee has been working through a series of recommendations that they made to the town council last year. And I don't know that we actually took any formal action with respect to those, but we certainly didn't reject any of them as well. One of the recommendations is to create a resiliency fund that would help to prevent or mitigate potential property damage, loss, economic impact as a result of some sort of storm activity. You know, I think we've all observed that, at least in my perception, is there more incidence of flooding in town, particularly on the Bayside. I know we're trying to do as much as we can with respect to that, particularly on Reed Avenue, which is the worst problem. But there is this notion, and this is not something that was invented by the Climate Change Committee, that the process that they used was to use some researchers from the University of Delaware, the same researchers who had guided the people in Lewis in their effort to do, through a similar exercise that we went through. So this is not something that the people in Lewis invented either. I think it's driven largely by recommendations from researchers in the field and people who study climate change issues, and this is something that they believe is important, both for doing something prospectively as well as retrospectively after a storm. You know, we've been very lucky, we've not been hit by a major hurricane. 2012 was a really close call for us. We were in the bullseye for quite some time, and that's the only time that I really took some real specific preparations in terms of getting ready for a potential hurricane, including, you know, sanddaging doors and that sort of thing, boarding up windows. So we've been very fortunate, but that's not to say we will be in the future that at some point there is the real possibility that we will face a storm like this. So, the first question is, does this make sense for us? It was one of the recommendations that the people in Lewis approved for them to pursue. Bethany Beach does have an ordinance like this, or a fund like this. Let me see if I can pull that up quickly. Just one second, sorry. This is actually in the Act Climate Summary, the Association of Coastal Towns. Bethany has a storm emergency relief fund, and it's intended, they say it's intended to be used for cleanup, repair of infrastructure, replacement of equipment, and other town-owned property and operating expenses if needed in the aftermath of a significant weather event. They fund this by using a portion of the residential and commercial rental tax, hotel rental tax, property tax, and parking revenue. They add that to their emergency fund each year. So, you know, there is some local precedent for this kind of fund. First question for us is, do we think such a fund is needed here in Dewey Beach? I tend to think we should give some serious consideration to this idea. And if we do think it's worthwhile pursuing, how would we fund it? There are several possibilities. What the Climate Change Committee came up with was basically the idea of, it could be a dedicated tax to creating something like this. It could be some sort of set aside created specifically for this. We could combine something like the infrastructure fund, something like that into this. We have a rainy day fund, which we still need to define the specific uses for. We also have the beach tax fund, which thus far has been set aside and restricted solely for replenishment of the ocean beach. We do have a hotel tax, fifty percent of which right now is going to capital improvement for the new town hall. That's a possible future use of, that's a possible set of funds that could be used in the future to fund a resiliency fund like this. Obviously, if we were to go forward with something like this, you know, we're not voting on anything today, just trying to get a sense of what the commissioners think about this thing. There's a tremendous amount of work that would have to go into developing something like this to specify not only how it would get created, but how it would get used. You know, there's some other, perhaps, funds around. I know we're part of the Sussex County Hazard Mitigation Plan, so, you know, we'd have to see how that intermingles or connects to something like this. So let me just stop there and see what others think about this.
Before we open up the council, Kate, is anyone in the room to make a comment on resiliency? Not in this room, that room first.
We have Kate Lockland joining, and I don't know if you wanted to comment on this or not.
Kate, are you there?
Kate, we're going to let people here in town hall comment first, and then if you do want to make a comment, just let Kate know. Be in the chat. Mr. Thomas?
Hello again. I'm still David Thomas, still on Reed Street. I was interested at the last meeting of the Climate Change Committee, that there was a subcommittee on the resiliency issue, and they had come up with a one-page white paper. And I see that as kind of a parallel to David Lyons' effort that has resulted in what I was so happy to share earlier today, and what I hope to contribute is an extension of that. As it turns out, the past president of the Climate Change Committee was on the Finance Committee, and he indicated that years ago, the Finance Committee believed that having a resiliency fund was a worthy thing. So now it came to the Climate Change Committee, and here's a white paper. Now, what the white paper didn't mention is, a few items here. The existence of a resiliency fund can significantly enhance the grantworthiness of an applicant municipality. One, demonstrates that they get it. The applicant, that is to say, is proactive as to planning for future risks and challenges. It is my distinct impression that grantmakers indeed prioritize funding projects that are sustainable and reflect good planning, especially big-picture planning as opposed to one-off type focuses. Two, such funding provision reflects a stable type of fiscal management that is attuned to project longevity, not just immediately apparent issues. Three, the tendency of such funding to be reflective of community awareness and support, leading to a stronger likelihood of backing over the long haul. Four, such funding buffers grant projects from failure by mitigating risk-making for a safer bet in grantmaker perception, you know, that you salted away things that will buffer against failure. And then five, which I really see as kind of four, is, climate change-related grants, like disaster recovery planning, community development efforts, usually have goals that align with the goals of a well-planned, prepared, and designed resiliency fund. This similarity of criteria and objectives gets back to the first point. The municipality gets it, kind of a simpatico, okay? So, I hope I've sold you on the idea that, yes, we need to have a resiliency fund. The town has two committees that are in that align. My concern is that, like with the free board discussion that's gone on for a couple of years now, there are several steps involved. Logically, the first would be an assessment of needs and goals, the creation of planning, outlining how the fund will be used to achieve the municipality's resiliency goals, and that would include specific projects, timelines, performance metrics, so as to measure progress. Well, in that very first one, what are the assessments and needs and goals? It sounds like it comes back to the climate change, well, what are those things? And it whipsaws back and forth.
They have to wrap this up.
Yeah, and so I'm hoping that the historical materials from the Finance Committee can come forth, just as with respect to free board, we can bring it all together and get it moving. One of the factors is that we have multiple grants every year, and we want to be grant-worthy now for those grants that are occurring. So, this is not...
Mr. Thomas, we will...
A longer term, this is something...
No, no, this is what I'd like, if you have some really good notes there, if you can forward them to me at my, the email that's on town hall, it'd be part of the overall conversation. I appreciate it.
Yes, to bring it all together, which gets into that number nine point, and I won't speak to that because you already get the flavor of it.
Got it.
Thank you.
As we open up this, from a council discussion standpoint, one of the comments I talked to Gary is to, you know, it's clear from a resiliency fund to me, and just make sure everyone else, this is for, it's not loans out to residents to get them through this, to assist in rebuilding the infrastructure, getting back to a point of being able to conduct business here in town. And I'd ask that we, and I have asked this in the past, is to understand, I could say that the rainy day fund, to a certain degree, is a resiliency fund. The question is, you know, it's funded as half of the operating budget, but in my mind, which I put it out, is if town hall, the inability for town employees is to get here, if there's an issue, how do we continue to compensate them through that period so that we don't lose them? And if this is a, let's look at our capital expenditures or the value of our fixed assets in addition to, as part of that, because it could be a rainy day and/or resiliency fund, that how those funds could use. And you and I have had this conversation of understanding the scenarios of where and how funds would be used or disseminated. Devin?
I have two thoughts. My first thought is, we're getting really close, we don't know what the number is yet, to spending a lot of money, you know? And until we're on the other side of that, and we figure out not only how much we're going to cost a building, but we've got, you know, the thing furnished and all the different sources of funding headed out, we're not going to know what our account balances are, you know, to make any decisions. So from my perspective, well, it's good to kind of make some plans for what we might do. I think that any major changes in terms of big fund balances should be on the other side of the town hall project. My other thought regarding this is not that it's not a good idea and needed, but that the problem is potentially so big and so varied, I don't think we really have the ability to say, to plan for what would be a major disaster, nor would we have the ability to know how the federal and the state government potentially are going to take a role versus what our local role would be. So it's almost like, I hate to say it, it's almost like it's too big a potential problem if we get hit by a tidal wave, you know, to know how we're going to plan in advance for it because we don't know, we don't know what's going to happen to us, and we don't know what other resources we're going to have to bear. So, you know, from my perspective, it's like I see kind of there being a need for it, but I just think it's so big, I don't know how we would ever really, fully...
I think in part it starts with understanding the scenarios in which these funds, rainy day or resiliency fund, would be utilized and how they would be utilized.
Yeah, and just in response to your comments, I think part of what you could do with a resiliency fund is actually fund some research to understand, you know, what the limits of the problem are and, you know, what we as a small municipality really could do in terms of planning for a... in terms of planning for a curse storms and how we could best use the economic resources that we might have in a resiliency fund. You're right, I don't think we have a clue what we could do. It is potentially a huge problem, but there are people out there who can help us figure that out. And if we have some money, and perhaps we can do that through a grant, if we have some seed money, we can use that as matching funds for a grant opportunity. Then, you know, we can bring some people in here who really do understand what we should be planning for. What it is we can do as a small municipality.
Any other comments?
Yeah, you know, it's good to have. It's, you know, to me, this is an extension of infrastructure, right? That's what we're gonna, that's where the money's gonna go. So the question is, if we need to raise money, if we increase the beach tax, are we allowed to use those dollars towards this, or do we create a separate tax? But, you know, I think any tax, we're gonna have to have a referendum on. And people can say yes or no to it.
I would suggest that we continue to consider this idea as we go forward building Town Hall and make no specific decision until after that part of our budget has been settled.
I tend to disagree with that. I think this is long-range planning. The sooner you start long-range planning, the better
No, I'm saying planning, planning both settle.
I don't wanna wait until after the Town Hall is settled out.
Yes, the simultaneous trains, side-by-side trains.
I thought you said to wait.
No, planning while it's being built, but not doing anything right this moment.
Well, what kind of guidance do we give back to the Climate Change Committee?
The first thing I would say is, it'd be nice to know, if the Climate Change Committee, I'll just use mine as an example, could they reach out to identify potential consultants that could come in and help us develop the scenario planning and how to build the resiliency funds? And if, once we know what that is, and we know what that proposal is, then we could look to possibly ask for grant funding to assist and to other municipalities to assist that fund. But I think that that may be a next step, because we're running blind. Without some advice as to what to do with the next step.
Has anyone found another town that's done something like this, that's a small town?
Well, we know that Lewis approved it as part of their plan for approaching climate change effects. I don't know where they are in the process. And, you know, we know that Bethany has a similar type fund. So we could certainly talk to both of those groups to find out more about what they've
I'm happy to call both of those bears and ask if you'd put in touch with whoever's in charge of it and figure out how they got there and where it is.
Okay, that's good.
All right. Okay. Anything else? Number eight, review and discuss pedestrian safety concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So there was over 300 responses back from the survey. I didn't know if you wanted to talk about that now. I've gone over a number of times of how many things the town has done over the last four years to increase public safety, everything from adding the signs down on King Charles for the crosswalks to adding the signs on the Center Island, to lowering the speed limit, to doing a number of things on the pavement to try to improve safety, including the radar boards at both ends of town on Route 1. We have a lot of traffic that comes through Dewey, as everybody knows. We have a very active nightlife. In a day, people moving from the west side of town to the east side of town to get to the ocean. Looking through a lot of the comments from the survey, one thing I did notice, they say they think the town's doing a good job. And they've done a good job recently making things better. But they feel that, you know, for example, red lights need to be added instead of yellow. We've already checked with the state, they're not gonna do that. And I think I sent out to the commissioners that the state's actually gonna do away with one of the red lights out on Route 1 near the outlets, because they're gonna replace it with a regular traffic light. And eventually, they're gonna replace the other red light out there, because it's causing too many problems. The other thing was speed bumps on Route 1. The state's not gonna allow us to put speed bumps out on Route 1. The other thing we heard was just more enforcement out on the road. I think the chief discussed that earlier today. The other thing was cameras out on the road. At this point, I don't foresee that as an option either, to put cameras out there to show cars that didn't stop. Right now, the state doesn't allow us to do that for speeding yet. There was other comments about getting rid of the crosswalks and making people go to the actual stoplights. And I don't know if the commissioners went through all the different comments that were there, but there were some that referenced, you know, putting in some type of overpass. There was one that mentioned putting tunnels underneath. There were some that said, you know, 25 is too slow during the winter hours. It needs to go back up to 30 or even to 35 during the winter to get traffic moving through. Too many signs, people are too distracted. Those are all things that are true, but I don't know what else, as a town, we can do to address this. With the exception of, and there were some good comments, having some of the business owners maybe put flyers up in their establishments about safety when crossing the roads, when pushing the light, don't walk straight out. But we've sprayed paint down, that's on the ground too, also telling them to check both lanes and push the button. But there may be an educational part of this that we may be able to do a better job on. But I'm not really sure what guidance you want to give mayor, the chief, on how we could increase the safety at the crosswalks that we haven't already done. Some folks don't want us to take out or trim the trees in the Center Island. But we're gonna have to do some of that in the Center Island, where some of those yellow beacons are hard to see because of the trees. But I'm open to other suggestions from the council. If they have other things that they think that we should do.
I did have one question. You mentioned the automated speed enforcement. At one time, the state was kind of bending towards that they were gonna let that start to happen.
Sure.
Not on Route 1, not on the main route.
So they won't allow it on Route 1? Will they allow it on King Charles?
So they passed it here in the state of Delaware, residential roads, but they haven't come up with the actual rules for it yet. And then, once they do, the rules that I've seen that are in draft is that you have to do a six-month study. You have to show that so many cars were over a certain speed limit. Then you have to apply to the Department of Public Safety, Highway Department, to actually get permission to do that. And then there's some talk, how much of the actual fine from that camera that's put up for the speed enforcement comes to the town, and how much goes to the state?
So I guess my question, you know, a lot of the feedback was that we still have a big problem on King Charles.
Yeah.
There's definitely a lot of feedback, because I went through those comments on that. And I guess my question would be, you know, we have that thing that says how fast you're going. When you're coming on down, it's technically none of our property. But could that thing be set to do a counter, like, study-wise, so we could start to get data on how many people are speeding?
Yeah, I don't know. Those signs are about $6,000. I don't know if you add something else in there to capture the data on how many of them are going fast before they actually come on to King Charles. I don't know, we'd have to look into that.
That's a good idea.
The easiest way to do that would be to ask the state to come in and do the actual road test, where they put the two pieces out there, and it calculates how fast the first tire and the second tire cross it.
I wouldn't mind us having them find out how many people are speeding up King Charles. Wouldn't you guys mind giving information?
But are you referring to the sign that's outside of Dewey?
It's technically just outside of town.
All right, that's our thought.
I think down by Collins Street to heading south, that's where people fly in, because they're heading south with the traffic lights.
We did discuss in the prior meetings, a lot of people, I saw one of the comments, is that we reduce the speed or that we increase the speed from 15 to 25. And as I said before, we did not do that. There are inaccurate signs up, and it's 25, it's not 15. So those were put in error. It's always been 25, we didn't increase the speed. And when we hit a few areas and we did a traffic study of our own, and I had officers deployed so many hours for so many weeks, and we came back with the amount of citations to show their highest speed, it were very few. Because when you're driving and people are walking or standing at their house, you think they're going 40 miles an hour, and they're not. It's just a perception. It's not that they're actually going over 25 miles per hour. And we do sit on King Charles a lot and run enforcement, even though on that study, it said a lot of times, where the officers, they're not writing speeding tickets. Well, we are. We've been writing a ton of tickets, as I said in my stats, since we started collecting stats. So a lot of this is perception, it's not actual.
And I get that, when you're still, you know, it's very hard to tell what someone's speed is for a channel when you're still. So you're officers when they say, because I know they do sometimes park down at the gully at Chesapeake and control. They're not seeing a lot of people coming around that bend over 25?
No. No, and if they are, they, you know, for a certain speed, they stop them and they give them a citation. So that's the problem we have. And there are no such things as cameras that monitor crosswalks that would monitor to issue a ticket, like a speed camera. And that was put on the survey a lot, and the people want us to put cameras on every crosswalk to get the license plate of a violator that didn't stop at the crosswalk and give them a citation. There's just nothing like that in place at this time.
So also in the comments, there was a lot of reference to things that happened in the forgotten mile. And that is outside of our town borders, and there's nothing we can do there. And I wanted that to be reflected, that we appreciated that feedback, but that's outside of our jurisdiction.
Yes, it is.
To go back to the education notion, I have heard from people that are from out of town that flashing yellow means caution, and it doesn't mean stop. So to educate people, I don't, I know we have too much visual stimuli in this town. It's a little bit like Vegas, and it's a lot of fun and a lot of energy because of that, but it makes it hard what to pay attention to. But if part of the message could be flashing yellow means stop for the pedestrian, that would be helpful. That's too much to put on the sign outside of town, I think, but I don't know. How to get that out would be, I think, important.
That's kind of what I was thinking. I'm not sure, there ought to be some sort of information we could put on a sign as you enter town to get people to pay attention to those flashing yellow lights. I'm not sure what the specific wording would be, but there should be something that we could do. The other question I had, and this is really prompted by, you know, driving south on Route 1 earlier today and stopping for a flashing yellow signal as a pedestrian in the center, and there are at least three cars on the right who just zipped right through. What's the legal basis for ticketing someone who does that? I mean, can you pull them over if, in that sort of situation and give them a citation?
When somebody, yes, they can get a citation.
Okay, what about if there's no one actually physically in the crosswalk at the time? The signal is going, and you know they intend to cross, but, you know, what's the basis? They don't have to be?
They have to step out.
They have to step out?
Yeah, just like, it's just like any other controlled crosswalk. I mean, they have the right of way, but if there's nobody stepping out. Some people just stand there because they're talking, and they have no intention to go across the crosswalk.
And if someone's, what if someone's in the median?
If they're in the median, they're supposed to stop, they're supposed to stop. But usually, what happens is if they're already starting to proceed and someone keeps going, then they would be issued a citation. But you can issue a citation to someone standing in the median. But a lot of time, people hesitate. I worked the race last Saturday, and I was working, and there was one of our flashing yellow crosswalks, and people weren't hitting the button. And I kept having to tell people, you have to hit the button to activate the light so people will stop. Some of these people just think they could walk across without activating the lights. And they don't, I mean, you can't, I mean, it doesn't work that way. You have to hit the button to make the lights activate, to get people's attention. The one thing about our lights is a lot of people say they need to come down lower. But obviously, I drive through town all different hours, and they say they need to be lowered, and you can't see them in the day. Well, that's not true. You can see them flashing in the day, and they are low enough to get your attention, if you're paying attention. The problem is, drivers do not pay attention. If you're actually paying attention when you're driving your vehicle, you're not gonna run somebody over. You're gonna see that there are people standing in the median strip, and that the lights are flashing, and that you need to stop. It is true that yellow means caution, not stop. So that's hence the problem that we have. But state highways basically say, you know, we can't, they're not gonna change those to red.
They don't want to change to red.
So there's nothing that we can do about that. I mean, we have put stuff on our Facebook page, we can put stuff out on the town page, we can put stuff in the Gazette, we write stories, we do put information out. Especially before summer, we can continue to do that. We can try to come up with a sign, like you said before, coming into town about the flashing, you know. But once again, they say we have too many signs everywhere. It's just a matter of people paying attention.
So one of the things my HOA does is includes information about the town. For example, the dogs have to have their licenses to be about, and some of the, I don't know. Could that be something that we ask the rental agents to include in their packets? That yellow flashing lights mean you stop for the pedestrians?
Sure.
We could, yeah.
I'll encourage everyone, either who's watching this or in the room, read through these. Read through these 287 comments and go through them, because it may spark an idea that you have that we can implement, that's not gonna, all ideas are good ideas, especially if they spark new ideas. And so, but the one fact is that the town has really done an incredible job over the last seven years of just slowly adding different things, whether it be the wave, whether it be the crosswalks, whether the reduction in the speeding on Route 1. We truly do care about the public safety and doing everything we possibly can.
Absolutely. I think the one thing I wanted to add, that some of the comments were about getting rid of the flashing crosswalks, that would be a big mistake, because then you'd go back to people running across anywhere, because they're not gonna go down to the controlled intersections.
Right.
And the controlled intersection by Salisbury is a five-minute wait time, and people don't wanna wait. So if you get rid of that option of the flashing, at least that can get people safely across the street. And, but if you get rid of all those, then you're gonna have people running across all the time, and no one's gonna see them, and we'll have more people struck and maybe killed. So that would be a bad idea to do that. I think it's good to have them.
That was my question. How many pedestrians got hit this year? We used to average seven.
We had the one that kind of tapped around the car, because I was coming around a corner. I think we had a bicyclist that fell off that got tapped and broke an ankle. I think we've had two. Is that about accurate, Bill, that you can remember?
So just for clarity, tapped means hit by a car in your world?
Does that include the person that threw the drink onto the car? So that would be three, I think.
That would be three. Most, I mean, we haven't had any significant, like, last year, or like this time of years, where we had the one person crossing, and he was severely injured. Everything has been very minor this year.
I think psychologically, what people see now is there's close calls. Those close calls used to be somebody that got hit.
Yes.
Because I think we, if I remember the numbers right, it was seven, and now we've been averaging like two.
Yeah.
So there's five people that didn't get hit, that everybody's thinking, it's like, look at all those close calls. Like, thank God we had a close call, not something worse, right?
Absolutely.
So I just think psychologically, people think it happens, you know, I almost got run over. Well, you didn't get run over, which is good. Get rid of the lights, and you might have.
A suggestion that was provided to me, and I don't know if it's even possible in Dewey or Delaware, and it was something I saw in Beverly Hills. At the stoplights, the full stoplights, they have both the perimeter crossings and then the crossing in the middle. So everything that stops for one period of time, and you can go this way, this way, or diagonally across. I don't know if Delaware does that. I don't know if that would be good or bad, but it was a suggestion that wasn't in the written stuff, but was provided to me. Throwing it out there.
Four-way free-for-all, just go whatever direction you want in Dewey.
Just at stoplights.
Just at stoplights, all right.
Pedestrian rotary.
Any other comments? All right. Number nine, discuss the current focus and objectives of the Climate Change Committee, including efforts to identify and streamline information sources. Commissioner Perserker.
Sure. Excuse me, this is the third piece that we want to talk about with respect to the Climate Change Committee. When they convened in July, they began to talk about, they talked about all of the recommendations that had been submitted to the commissioners. And those are all basically kind of discreet recommendations. But then there was some concern about long-range planning and sort of a comprehensive approach to what we do about sea level rise and climate change. And someone pointed to the example of Virginia Beach, an obviously far larger city than we have here in Dewey Beach. But perhaps there's something to be learned there. They talked about the possibility of getting some professional consulting advice, and that obviously would need some funding. So they did agree to form a subgroup, and that subgroup came back and reported at the last meeting. And I think, at least my sense is, you're feeling a little bit overwhelmed with both the amount of information that's out there and the way to organize it, and the way to kind of keep contact with the town and understand the resources the town has available versus those that the committee really needs to develop on its own. They did some review of what's taking place in Lewis, Fenwick Island, and South Bethany. And I think there was kind of a collective feeling that maybe some of the other towns were ahead of us in some sense. But they really couldn't characterize in what way they are ahead of us. So they're also aware of the association So they're also aware of the Association Coastal Town Survey that was done last year, which I think you were president at that time. That's very helpful, but there's no information about whether that, there's a continuing effort to update that information and keep, continue to track that. So they're, they're really looking for guidance from the commissioners. Is there a central, central point of contact in the town that they should look to for information about what other municipalities are doing with respect to climate change and sea level rise? They asked for an update at their next meeting from the town manager and the building official. Those were the two people that I could think of who were probably good contacts. You know, I wasn't aware that there was any single source that we should point them to, and I'm certainly not aware of what the status is of the ACT effort. So questions, is there a central point that could be established, or ways in which collecting and organizing such information could be streamlined? I thought of a couple of possibilities they might pursue that might be helpful. Perhaps doing an in-depth case study assessment of the approach taken by a particular municipality, and seeing what the progress has been that they have made toward the objectives and goals that, that they've established. They might do a, undertake a new survey effort to see what other municipalities are doing, much like the effort that was done by ACT. So again, looking for ideas, for guidance. It, it also occurred to me, and I hadn't really thought very carefully about this, most of the people who are on that committee now were not on last year's committee, so they don't have the same base of experience that, you know, that, that people would have if they had been on the committee for two years. The chair certainly has been there for two years. I'm not sure if there's anybody else who is a, oh, there, yes, the former chair is still on the committee. But other than those two, I'm not sure that, that the rest of the committee has that, that base of experience. So it's not surprising, I think, that they're, they're feeling a little bit lost and need some guidance.
Okay. I, I know that Dave, Davis had reached out to me, and I had sent him the contact informations for the parish mayors from Association Coastal Towns to fund, identify who the person within their communities are focused on climate change, are responsible for climate change. I don't know if he's been successful or unsuccessful, that was two or three weeks ago.
Yeah, probably, yeah, within the last couple of weeks.
But I can reach out to Dave and just see how much progress he made, and see if I can facilitate that at all to.
Okay.
Form some collective group that then can discuss this, and, and potentially bring another organization like the Center for Alum Base that might be able to navigate this.
And would there be a way to collect repository of that kind of information, so as the committee changes over, there's?
That, that's another issue that they talked about, a way of organizing and storing that, that kind of information. There is some information already on the town website, but they, they want to make some of that more visible, even the results of, of committee meetings make that more visible and accessible to people, so that it really is a better base of experience for understanding what's.
We do have access to the minutes and our videos available.
They do, but it's, unless you know it's there, you don't necessarily go looking for it. Even the town videos, if you click on live meetings, it takes you to something that might have the current meeting, but you really have to click again on live meetings to get the whole history of all of the meetings that have been recorded. So it's.
Is that a folder issue?
I don't know.
No?
Just the way that YouTube is set up, that your live streams kind of go to a different tab.
Okay.
It's not the, not the center.
All right. We'll look to see if there's anything we do to, to agree with that.
But I think it's very interesting hearing from the town, too, in terms of what resources the town believes are available, and what points of contact there should be. I mean, obviously, the building official and the town manager, but should one of you be considered the, the central point of contact for this committee on, on these kinds of issues and information? Or, you know, does that really have to be?
No, it, it should come to me, and then I would, would, if I wouldn't handle it, I would, you know, delegate it down. I just think if, if they want information from the other towns, they should reach out as the mayor's given them points of contact. They need information from me, what the town has done, and how we're trying to commit the town to, to, for the climate change. Yeah, they could reach out to me at any time.
Anyone here for public comment other than Mr. Thomas? And/or including Mr. Thomas.
You don't have to make a comment.
I said that I wouldn't.
All right, good. Close. I will, as I said, I will do those two things to, to help out the committee. Any other discussion on this topic? Number 10, comments. Commissioner Barron.
Well, I'd like to thank the Dewey Business Partnership for putting on a wonderful party last, last weekend, and, you know, that, that's on them to do that. I know that, you know, people think that the town puts that little party on, but that's the business partnership it does. But the estimate was 3,000-plus people there, so it's, it's quite a, quite of an event. So, and that's it, no other comments from me.
Commissioner Givings.
I used the picture that the Cape Gazette had of the crowd behind me on the stage saying, "Those were my house guests from this summer." So thank you for allowing me to provide proof of what a good hostess I am. I did want to, again, publicly acknowledge how much I appreciated the folks in town and out of town that took the time to fill out the safety survey. That was really interesting information, and I'm always looking for convergence of data, and we had a lot of it. Great ideas, not all of them we can do, and the town manager has addressed that nicely, but I did want to thank everybody for their input.
Commissioner Jazinski.
No comments.
Commissioner Persinger.
No comments.
I only have three comments, and two of them are reminders of things that you heard today. One, Public Safety Day tomorrow, Lions Club, come out and have some fun. Tried to convince the chief to do a dunk booth, but she wouldn't commit to that, so maybe next year. Second thing is the Chambers Event on October 9th at Grotto's here in town. But next Friday, we also have an organizational meeting for the swearing-in of council, as well as appointment of positions. With that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.